Good morning and welcome to Detroit's first Town Hall meeting with Governor Rick Snyder. I'm Mildred Gaddis. On behalf of Dr. Curtis L. Ivory, Chancellor here at Wayne County Community College District, who is incapacitated this morning, I bring you greetings. Dr. Ivory reminded me that when Governor Rick Snyder began perusing the idea as to whether or not he was going to run, and somewhere almost there, he came by this institution to meet with the Chancellor and the Board here at Wayne County Community College. And the Board was impressed by his commitment to education. We are happy to be here today. And on behalf of the Michigan Chronicle, the publisher, Mr. Hiram Jackson is here. We want to thank him and Radio 1 Detroit. Our Vice President and General Manager Kathy Steinauer is joining us as well. I would like to share with, take a moment here and just lay out for you today's game plan. Governor Snyder will come to the stage. He will have a three-minute opening statement. He will be joined by Bankolay Thompson. When he finishes his statement, I will also return over there and Bankolay Thompson and I will ask the Governor some questions. We will probably ask about two or three, time permitting, each, and then we will move to the floor and we will take your questions. We ask that you raise your hands and we will move in the direction. This Town Hall meeting will last for one hour, ending at 12 noon. At that time, and please keep in mind, we will be live for two hours from now until 1:00 PM. At that time, the Governor will exit the stage. We will, Bankolay and I will then be joined by the Detroit Free Press's Tom Walsh and Mr. Rod Maloney from WDIV-TV4. So with no further ado, I'd like to ask, welcome Governor Rick Snyder and Bankolay Thompson. Governor, your three-minute opening remarks.
Well, great. I feel like I'm in one of those debates. I'm happy to be with you today, though. It's great to be at Wayne County Community College. I'm a huge advocate of community colleges, and Wayne County Community College is doing a great job, and I want to thank them for having students here and being part of this. Many of you don't know, I actually started my college education at Kellogg Community College. And so I'm a firm believer in the model and how it works, and it's great to be with you. The other thing I'd like to say is I want to send my best to Mayor Bing and wish him a quick recovery from his surgery, because that was truly unfortunate. But what we're here to talk about today is hopefully a bright future for Detroit. If you look at it, we are in a crisis. In 1970, Detroit had over a million and a half people. Today, it has 714,000 people, losing more than half its population. And the question is, how do we address three central issues? One, how do we get to financial stability in the city, so its finances are sound and a base to build on? Two, how do we get better services to its citizens? They deserve it. They deserve more in public safety and lighting and transit, more job opportunities. And how do we make that happen? And the third one is, is how do we grow the city of Detroit? Because ultimately, that has to be the solution here. The solution is not about financial things or other things in the end. It's about growing the city and having it be a great place. So how do we keep Detroiters here because they're excited to be here? And how do we attract people to move into the city? That's ultimately the question we have to answer. And that's an answer where we all win together. And in the interest of doing that, my goal is not to run the city of Detroit, but to be a supportive partner, to say, isn't it important we get every resource we can focused on this issue? Shouldn't we have the state, the city, the county, the federal government? Not just the public sector, but the private sector and the not-for-profit sector, all coming together as a team, to say, it's about solving these three fundamental questions, working and winning together to make this an exciting place. That's the focus that I have. That's the goal I believe in. And I hope we can have a great discussion about that today. Thank you, Mildred.
Thank you, Governor. Bankolay?
Governor, that's a nice, that's a very good segue into where we're headed to this morning. You talk about how do we fix light and transportation and all of that. There are many different ideas in terms of how we arrive at that, but there is an understanding that in fact, the box starts with the Governor. So yesterday, the City Council pushed for $137 million in bonds to help get the city financially up till June. What specifically would you like to see get done? Can you tell this audience, what specifically would you like to see get done to address Detroit's financial stability?
Yeah, Bankolay, that's a great question. And it goes back to my comment about how I'm not here to run the city of Detroit. I'm here to be a supporting resource. And that's something that we're going through that process right now. Literally, I'm waiting for it to come from the mayor and city council, which would be the exhibits to go with the agreement we've been talking about. That would be the action items. Again, the ideas that they want to put out, and what I hope they are, are very specific ideas that have timelines and deliverables. Because one of the big challenges in Detroit is, is we don't need more plans. We've had plans going back for 40, 50 years in Detroit. We need things to get done, positive actions to make a difference. Now, a number of those are fairly straightforward. There are important things, I know, that should be on that list. It's like, how do we look at potentially doing a lighting authority to get the streetlights going again? How can we work on a regional transit authority that can serve as a backbone and a long-term framework for better transit in Detroit? We've thrown out ideas, how we could partner on a Belle Isle idea potentially, where the city would continue to own it. But we could operate it under a lease agreement as a state park with access to the citizens of Detroit and show improvements, and so those resources could go help in the neighborhoods. So there's a whole list of those things. And what I would say is, is I don't want to be trying to manage Detroit. I want leaders in Detroit doing that, but to say, okay, too many cases over the last few years, it's been talking about doing these things. And I think people are at the under of their patience. The citizens deserve action to happen. And I want to see what I can do to help make sure action gets done. And if it's not getting done, how do we reinforce it so it does get done?
Governor Snyder, a couple of weeks ago, you were asked a question about how much money the state of Michigan would be willing to bring to Detroit. And the response, of course, was that the state of Michigan cannot be in the business of helping, helping every struggling city. I've talked with economists from some of the greatest institutions in the country, and here's what they all say. They all say that there is no way, it's virtually impossible for Detroit to recover and/or rebound without some injection of capital. If the state of Michigan is not willing to do that, where will it come from?
Yeah, Mildred, what I've said is, is I'm willing to look at that. And there are things, some of these programs I just talked about with Bankolay require investment by the state to help be supporting in that. I just gave a, gave a public safety message recently that talked about how we can do a jobs program for the structurally unemployed for $15 million in four cities. A good component of that would be in Detroit. So we are talking about investing dollars, but in terms of the philosophy of the old, it shouldn't just be about spending money. One of the big challenges, if you look at the review report that just came out, that Detroit has run a deficit since 2005 of significant dollars. It's borrowed over $600 million just to get by. It's just borrowing another $137 million. Now, my view is, is just spending more money to borrow more without structural change to say, we're, we need to see better services and balance take place and real positive action happening. And that's when I'm most interested to say, now we're on a path to success, let's check off some of those boxes on that list of things to do. And when that's going on, it makes it a whole lot easier for us all to come together to say, okay, now how can we double down? How can we do more? How can we show that investment is showing a real return, instead of having people believe it's simply being spent to continue the old way of doing things that just didn't work?
Let me inject here, we know in negotiations, personalities and who gets in the room matters a lot, in terms of whether you like the individual or you don't like the way they conduct themselves and so forth. And you know, history tells us that Governor Milken and the late Coleman Young had a great rapport, which helped to stabilize the city's financial crisis back in '81. When you look at Mayor Bing, initially, both of you started off on a, on a great path. He was, you know, emcee at your inauguration. And do you have faith in Mayor Bing's ability to ride the ship?
Well, I want Mayor Bing to succeed. That's the starting point of that, Bankolay. Because again, his success means we're all succeeding. And to me, this isn't about personalities. It's great to have a good relationship, and I, I've had a very good relationship with the mayor. Again, I'm concerned about his health. So as a practical matter, we need to get beyond that, though, because ultimately, the citizens are not looking at personalities either. I don't believe. They're looking to say, are my services getting better or worse in the city of Detroit? Is there a situation where they say, I'm excited about staying in Detroit, or I want to stay? And there's, is there a situation where people are saying, I want to move in the city of Detroit because it's the place to be for the future? That's ultimately how we should be judged, not on whether we're nice people or not, not whether we smile or not. I'm an accountant, I'm not the most exciting guy. But as a practical matter, it's really how you create a dialogue to say, it's about showing real, real results for real people. And you try to do that in a professional way, and to the degree you can do it with friendship, all the better. That just makes life easier.
So can you tell us, are you encouraged by what's going on so far?
Um, yes and no. I am encouraged to say there is positive things going on, that we're moving on a path, that people are talking about getting an agreement, getting something that we can put this behind us, because every day we spend doing more agreements is a day less we're doing implementation. So that would be the no part. Then I am concerned that there is, in my view, there isn't a lot of good reason why this wasn't done some time ago. We could have been implementing stuff for months now, if not longer. And I'm impatient. And as a practical matter, I think the citizens are impatient. They want to see action. So that's where I say, it shouldn't be about personalities, it should be about results. Let's get it done and let's go.
Speaking of your impatience, there is, let's talk about what's occurred in the last 24 hours. I had the opportunity to talk with Andy Dillon yesterday, the state treasurer, who said he was feeling really good about the way things were moving. He said, in fact, 90% good, which kind of blew me away. I said, that sounds pretty good to me. And he said that when they completed the process, they would get the, their agreement, their plan to the review committee. Hopefully, the review committee would approve it, get it to you, and hopefully, you would smile, sign off, and say, let's, let's get Detroit moving. All of that was very positive. You had the, the action going on in city council yesterday. But then, at the end of the day, there was a report coming, a response coming out of your press office that the governor's office was, was not interested in Band-Aid approaches. Everybody else was excited that we're, at least we're, there is some forward movement to the immediate problems, because there are two problems. That's the immediate crisis facing the city of Detroit and the challenge of, of getting rid of the institutional debt that's been around for a lot of years. Certainly, something that has accrued over that many years, one would not expect that you'd have a solution within a month or so. So what is the basic, bottom-line, fundamental issue for you that would prevent you from signing from what you've heard from your state treasurer?
No, I appreciate that, Mildred. The question, the response from the office was more in regard to the, the request for simply more money. And again, it's not to get back and forth, it's, we all want the same solution, Detroit to succeed. So hopefully, people don't read in the negatives, and that's one of the challenges you have, is miscommunication during this. So that's why it's great when we have this dialogue. That's why I'm happy to be with you today. In terms of the agreement, I talked about it on Monday, or Tuesday, when I did a press conference. And my view is, is I think the agreement itself is a very workable, good agreement. It needs to be enhanced with some additional language, so it can also qualify under, as a consent agreement, in addition to a deficit elimination plan and interlocal agreement, because there are legal constraints that I have. And I believe that language is doable language. I, I don't see why that should be an impediment, if it's worded right. And again, we're working on the language. We're not telling them the language, we're talking through it together. And the other piece is, are these exhibits that go with the document, that talk about the specific things that people are signing up to do, and to make sure those are tangible things that have real delivery dates, realistic delivery dates? Because it took how many decades to get in this mess? It's not going to get solved overnight. But some realistic dates that people can say, I can sign up to do that, that we can all agree on, and make sure they get done. And people in good faith are working on that. So in many respects, I, I am also optimistic that we can get an agreement that hopefully we can all sign, because if you step back and look at it, why shouldn't we be able to do that? We all want the same answer.
Governor, here's what John Q. Citizen in Detroit is wondering. He's hearing a little bit here, a little bit there, much of it quite confusing. And it seems sometimes as if the people who are discussing it are confused about it themselves. But here's what they don't understand. They hear that the state of Michigan has this surplus. They know that the city of Detroit is in trouble. They are having difficulty processing a reality where the state is unwilling and will not, because the state is concerned about a repeated request for money, that the state would not immediately say, of course, we're going to do what we can, even if the state says we're going to do it this one time, Detroit, but in order for the city to sustain itself at this moment, it has to happen.
Well, again, if you look at the evidence of the city doing it to itself, how many times has it borrowed money since 2005? Not including this $137 million, just to meet the debt, the need to have balanced budget, it's had to borrow over $600 million. Many of these things are issues that should have been resolved and worked on going back for years. And we had the same issue in the state, Mildred, so I'm not picking on Detroit there at all. I mean, we had to do some fundamental things at the state of Michigan level that were problems, that had structural problems for years, and we've addressed most of those. We're not fully done yet. We're talking about some long-term financial reforms at the state of Michigan still, that we need to do. So this is not about Detroit alone. Most of the, many communities in our state, the state of Michigan itself, God knows, look at the federal government. Isn't there a long list of things they need to work on, in terms of deficit? A lot of it just needs to be worked through, because the public sector had got out of alignment in terms of spending money. And so my view is, is I'm happy to invest in Detroit. I think we're showing, I've already committed to do a number of things in the public safety message, in terms of job programs, kids programs, law enforcement, mental health courts, drug courts, property title issues, abandoned properties. Those are all programs we're going to do, whether there's an agreement or not. Those are things that we've already signed up to do to help the city of Detroit and our cities.
And there won't be any financial obligation on those programs for the city?
No, I, we're going to do them. I mean, that's why I stood up in front of the citizens of Michigan and said, we need to do it. And the simple thing is, is one of it's public safety. Public safety is not what it should be in the city of Detroit. And I stood up just in the last month to stand up to say, there are four communities in our state that just don't work right in terms of public safety. There are four, the violent crime rate of Flint, Pontiac, Saginaw, and Detroit, on average, is about four times as high as the state average. In my view, as a Michigander, that's absolutely unacceptable. And I put out a program to say, here are a bunch of good, tangible things that can help deal with that issue, that we should do regardless of agreements of any sort, of anything else. These are things that we're going to work on, that we're committed to do. I need support from the legislature for a number of them, but we need to do a better job on public safety for the citizens of those communities and all Michiganders.
You believe a lot in time limits, and you've talked about it. Now, in terms of restructuring city government, and you've seen the books through your treasurer and your team that was sent down here, what's the time limit in restructuring? If it, if it, if at all it is possible, what's the time limit in restructuring Detroit government?
Yeah, that's a really hard question, Bankolay, because, no, and the reason I'll tell you is, is it comes back to what my opening was. The most important thing that we get going, in addition to just helping the citizens who deserve better citizens, is growing the city of Detroit. The biggest answer to your question is, is if Detroit continues to decline, it's a huge problem. If it plateaus out, it's a gigantic problem still. If we can grow the city, and particularly, how fast we grow the city, is how we grow ourselves out of this problem in some rational fashion. Again, there are a lot of reforms that need to go with it. Mildred, it's not as simple as just saying it's growth. I mean, we need to reform long-term liabilities, we need to look at more efficient operations by far. But the other variable that goes with it is growing the city. And that's the question I'd ask the citizens today, is, are you excited about being in the city today, or would you think about leaving? If you're thinking about leaving, we're in trouble. Do you see someone wanting to move into Detroit today? Because if people aren't excited to say, this is the place to be, we are in trouble. And that's why we need to get a dialogue going, and that's where the public dialogue does not help. When they see people, public officials going back and forth in a negative way, I mean, would that get you excited about saying, I want to be in that community? No. I mean, that's where we need to put all that aside and just say, we're solving problems.
Governor, you know, at times, it seems as if Detroit is being penalized for something it's not guilty of. In this city, there has been an enormous erosion of the tax base, not only from residents, from citizens, but businesses. Businesses that came into this city were given great benefits to stay in the city, packed up their bags, and they left. And Detroiters, and, and took a whole lot of money with them, and you know quite clearly how that is. But as we've heard this debate about Detroit being in the condition that it's in, and what needs to happen moving, moving forward, what we have not heard is, what kind of industries? What kind of jobs? What are you going to do to strengthen the tax base in the city of Detroit? Anything short of that is just whistling in the wind.
Yeah, well, I'll step back for a minute, if it's okay, and just give you a perspective on a global basis. I took a trip to China last fall, and in China, I met with the Chinese Investment Board, the government agencies that decide where they invest billions of dollars and create all those jobs. And this Chinese official, the very senior official, looked at me, went through China's, China's success story, and said, hey, we've got this great economic model, we're growing 20, 30% a year, our portfolio is now worth this, all these great things are going on. And he said, why should we look at Michigan? And he was used to normal politicians coming back with some words that, you know, didn't really mean anything. I looked him dead in the eye, and I said, I can tell you exactly why you should look at Detroit and Michigan. And I said, the reason why is, we're the value place in the world. I said, we've got the most talented workforce. We have work to do, but you're overweight in your portfolio in China. You've got to diversify your investment. You've got to invest other places. And you can't make any money by putting them in money market certificates. You have to go make real hard investments in real places. And I said, the best place in the United States and the world is Michigan. And we're creating a climate to do that. And there are unique pieces in Detroit, not just in Detroit, but other communities that have had challenges in population that we need to actually do more on, and that was part of the idea of doing training programs. And programs, because if we can show we have the skilled tradespeople and the talented people, because we've been able to give them the right resources and the right connection to find jobs, not just workforce training, that's not good enough on its own, that's what's going to cause people to want to build businesses here, is because they have great people working there. And that fundamentally has to come back to the jobs question.
Governor, let's talk about restoring Detroit and making it grow, just like you mentioned, and Mildred's point in terms of the erosion of the tax base. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but there's a major issue that sometimes gets, gets swept under the carpet, and that's residency for police and firefighters. And most of the time, it becomes a tough issue, because no political leader wants to touch it. Would your administration look at restoring residency for police and firefighters as part of rebuilding or restoring Detroit's tax base?
Yeah, well, the starting point of that is, I view that that should be a discussion between the city and the labor people. Because again, that, I believe in collective bargaining, and we've done it successfully at the, the state level. So one of the questions is, is again, the city should be taking the point on that, working with labor, trying to find ways to do that, to be creative, and then coming to us to the degree, we can be a helpful resource in working through those kind of questions. Because again, we need to come back to the question about getting people excited to live in Detroit. One thing, it's really, this is one of the challenges that I have that concern me about all the dialogue that's going on, is, one of the things I always mention to anyone outside of Michigan when I was talking about Detroit is, I was bragging about Detroit. And the stop, one of the top lines I would give right out of the gate is, so I said, did you realize there's like 95% plus occupancy in Midtown Detroit? And they were just stunned. And I would, that, that gave me the door to go, to start selling Detroit. And the problem is, all these financial problems are now putting a cast over all the good things. There are a number of good things going on in Detroit. But how often is the last time you heard someone stand up and talk about the good things going on in the city? So I'll come back to something that gets lost too often, and even the dialogue we're having here today. The future of Detroit is not talking about how we're going to solve some crisis or disaster only. It's talking about what's the positive vision for Detroit? What's so exciting? How can we describe Detroit as the place to be for the future? And why people want to be here? We need that positive vision and passion and excitement. I mean, when I was talking about the young people going to Midtown, the line I would give to young people when I'd meet with them is, I said, I would flat-out look them in the eye and say, do you want to be another yuppie in Chicago, or do you want to make a difference in Detroit? Isn't that the model we want, where they want to come say, we want the ones that want to come make a difference in the town, not just follow on to be another yuppie?
Governor, I want to go back, and I know you don't like going back, to, to, to Bankolay's question. When the residency law was changed in, in, for Detroit, it was done by the state legislature. Detroit Mayor Dennis Archer, city council members, labor leaders ran, they begged, they campaigned, they lobbied unsuccessfully, however, and the law was changed. At that time, Governor Engler agreed with that, and his, you know, his folks supported him, and the law was changed. Bankolay's question pertains to the fact that with the great number of public workers, would you be willing to get your parties in control in Lansing these days, to get the Republicans to work on a bill that would restore or repeal the current law, so that Detroiters, public workers, people who work for public service in Detroit would have to live in the city? The Republicans would carry the vote. It would have to be changed by the state legislature. When this happened, the head of police, fire, all of those unions, they were there. They campaigned with all of their might unsuccessfully, because they were outnumbered in Lansing, and they were not successful.
Again, the starting point should be, not be just deciding this, and I don't tell the legislature what's to do, but I'm happy to work on these ideas, so I have an open mind on that question. But shouldn't the right answer, it should be the mayor, the city council, the labor leaders, of the police union, the fire union, all coming together to say, Governor, can you help us work on this and have it introduced by Detroit legislators, and say, can you help get the other party on board to do this?
If they present a plan, you would sign on to it?
Well, again, I need to see the plan. But I'm saying I'm open-minded, but again, it needs to be coming from people in the city.
Governor, it's simple.
No, but again, do you, can you get the union leaders to come together with the, the city people and say that they're all on board to do that? I can't tell you for sure the legislature would go along. I can't tell you for sure I could support it all until I actually see the plan, but am I open-minded to look at it, obviously. I mean, we need to address these questions, but the questions, again, is this is where too often, people are saying, well, Governor, you're taking over the city, you're running the city, and literally, I'm not here to make that call. I'm not the one to start that discussion. I'm here to be a part of the process, and I'm an important part of that process. And I'll play my role, but it's got to get developed to the point of asking me to do what I should do.
Let's talk about BAL, because there's going to be, there's going to be an agreement between the state and BAL. Are you looking at all the departments within the city of Detroit that possibly could merge into an agreement with the state of Michigan, under this financial climate?
Can you give me an example, Bankolay?
For instance, the BAL, you have an agreement to work on with BAL. Public lighting is a major issue. So what I'm saying is, are you examining all the departments within city government that could possibly enter into an agreement with the state to, to, to manage those departments?
Well, again, not to manage them, but to really say, is, are they best as an authority in some fashion? How can they succeed? How can they be self-sustaining? How can they free up resources? How can they potentially be better managed, in some fashion? Now, we're very open to all that, but again, we're look, we've looked at them all, but it's always been in the context of us not coming to the city to say, you have to do that, but to say, here are more ideas. One of the things that I thought should have happened a long time ago, and I've been talking about this since I took office, and I've talked about it from both people in the city and I've talked to people in Washington DC about it, is to say, I don't understand, given the crisis, going even back to the beginning of 2011, why didn't we just say, who's the city point person? Who's the state point person? Who's from the federal government is the right person? Who could represent the neighborhoods, the community, the business community, and pick on different topics? Pick on different departments or areas of the city? And get these people working on brainstorming, on innovative ideas, and coming up with lists of ideas of improvements and things like that? And just do their reports, do it in a public, open fashion, bring them to the mayor and city council, bring them to the state, say, here's all these great ideas, which ones are the most important that we can do now? Which ones can we do right away? Which ones do we need to go find resources once we're succeeding? And do it. My view is, is I'd be happy to go get as many pizzas to slide under the door to get these people working hard so they could come out with great reports. Why didn't, why didn't we do that? I'm ready to go now.
Governor, this is going to be my last question before we move to the audience. Ben Kelly, I'd like to ask you to go over there. And I'd like to ask people who have questions to please raise your hand. Of course, we will not be able to get to all of your questions. We will take as many as we can. The governor leaves at noon. And of course, we will then continue with our roundtable with journalists Tom Walsh and Rod Maloney. So, Governor, you trust Andy Dillon?
Yes.
That's good news. That's good news for Detroit, because he's feeling, he says he's feeling pretty good about the way things are looking now.
Mildred, can I mention one thing, though? I think it's really interesting, if you step back, that Andy's been a great part of the team. But how many people go back to when I was taking office, that Andy actually ran for governor too, and he was Speaker of the House from the Democratic Party? And it shows that people can work together. This isn't about parties. This isn't about labels. This isn't about background. Andy's, we're a great team. We're part of a broader team. Let's drop all the labels and tags and just go take care of Detroiters and Michiganders.
Here's what one of, a Detroiter said to me yesterday, and it'll explain why I asked the question. This individual was listening to the show yesterday when I interviewed the treasurer. And he said, you know, with all of the movement, with all of the energy that everybody's pouring into finding a solution for Detroit, it would be a tragedy if the governor's people submitted a proposal, city council doing its work, and all of this work is done, and it gets to the governor's desk, and the governor says, absolutely not. What would have to exist in a proposal sent to you that would energize you to reject it?
Yeah, well, I would say the agreement process is at the 90-some percentile, that literally, there are a handful of paragraphs that I think need to be added from a legal perspective to make sure it qualifies under Michigan statute that I need to comply with and I need to look at. And then these appendices that talk about particular projects and timelines. Those are the kinds of things that really need to take place, and I would hope we're there. The only other thing I would say is, that would create a significant problem, is the current collective bargaining agreements, the tentative ones that were negotiated, don't solve the issues far enough. And it would be a major problem if those were approved and ratified. That I believe more discussion needs to go on, and that would be a huge issue if they were ratified.
Governors, we wait for people to ask questions. I asked Mayor Bing here two weeks ago if, in fact, his legacy will be defined by how, you know, he writes the financial rungs of Detroit. Is it unfair question to put that same question to you, that Governor Snyder's legacy as governor of Michigan would partly be defined how he responds to Detroit's financial crisis? Do you feel that way?
Well, to be open with you, Ben Kelly, I just try to do the right thing. I don't dwell on what my legacy is going to be. Since the time I took office, and hopefully, most of you recall, I was from the private sector. This is my first time I've ever held office. And I had no special interest money. The only interest I care about is the interest of the citizens of Michigan, including the citizens of Detroit. It's Detroit, Michigan. And you step back and look at it, I've said the two things I want to be measured on when I'm done in office, and I've been very consistent for two years plus, is number one, did I do what I said I was going to do? Because isn't that you ask of people that you were hired to do a job? And then secondly, did I create a long-term path of success for Michigan that was never about me being governor of Michigan? But it's about making a strong place for more and better jobs today and a place for our kids for the future. Those are the benchmarks I hope to be measured by.
Jason, and when you come to the mic, would you please give your name?
Well, good morning, Governor Snyder. Jay Scott Smith. I'm a reporter with TheGrio.com and MSNBC, and I'm also a Detroit native. And my first, obviously, in the last few days, there's been, actually, the last few months, there's been a lot of consternation about this entire situation, the consent agreement slash emergency financial manager possibilities. The other day, we had some very incendiary language from groups here in Detroit who, honestly, people are angry, and they're trying to get an understanding. They hear you say that you're not trying to take over the city, that you're not trying to run the city. I guess, just once again, try to reiterate why, what the difference is between this consent agreement and a quote takeover. And secondarily, there are groups who feel that this would limit the availability or ability to vote for their own leaders, or it would limit democracy, as you will, in the city. Just help explain for Detroit residents, and even for Detroiters across the country who have either left but still have a deep investment in the city, whether it's just emotionally or financially, what the difference exactly would be between a consent agreement and a quote-unquote takeover the city that a lot of people in the city fear.
Well, I appreciate that. I'll try to keep it simple, though, and short, because there's a lot of pieces to what you ask. To put it in a practical sense, though, the financial stability agreement we're talking about, if it's enhanced so it can also qualify with a couple paragraphs or so, what it really does is have the city run the city in large part. Where basically, the citizens of the city would be electing their officials in the normal course of things. The mayor and the city council are responsible for the strategy and policies of the city. The two areas that the agreement focuses in on that I believe are absolutely critical, and I would hope most of the citizens of Detroit would agree with me, is to say, if you look at the financial history of the city, it needs to do a better job of managing its finances. All you have to do is read the review report. They haven't estimated the revenues appropriately in terms of, this goes way back, in terms of estimating, the budget process of hitting the budget numbers hasn't happened. The operational things need to improve for better services, plus more cost efficiency. And the second piece is about implementation. How many plans have there been over the last few decades for Detroit? And if you pull out any of those plans, how many of those actions have actually gotten implemented to make a positive difference for the citizens? The stack of plans is huge. And so this actually has some mechanisms to follow through, to make sure if there are challenges on implementation, are there people that can follow through to make sure things do get implemented? So it's really dealing with the topics of financial stability and responsibility and accountability and implementation. Because again, I would just ask the citizens, are you getting the services you really want or you think you deserve? And is a financial basis that's solid? And ultimately, the goal is to grow the city. That's what these agreements, this agreement that we've been working on so diligently, and again, it's not been us telling them, it's been a mutual discussion, that I just hope we can get there. And to be blunt, I have a difficulty seeing any reason why we shouldn't.
Good afternoon, I'm sorry, good morning, Governor. My name is Valerie Kendall, and I've heard you speak this morning several times about public safety and how much of a concern it was to you. And I wanted to know why, if that was such a concern, that you, one of the first things you did was close the posts for state troopers in Detroit. And then also, you closed the satellite posts, which is in Harper Woods, which borderlines one of the most dangerous zip codes in the country, 48205. And you left them, you know, out there hanging with nothing, no extra political, I mean, public service.
No, I thank you for your question. And I'll tell you why, because I want to clear up what really matters, which is good law enforcement in the field with the citizens. And if you look at the Michigan State Police, I'm really proud of what they were able to do this last year. We had a budget deficit at the state of Michigan. We had a billion, $1.4 billion deficit that we had to address. And I gave a goal to the director of the Michigan State Police that was a huge challenge. She accepted that challenge, and she went and worked with her team, the team of the MSP. And they came back with an innovative solution. We cut their budget, and what they did is, is we closed over half the state police posts in the state of Michigan. Not just Detroit, but the state of Michigan. And what happened by closing that is, we were able to do that because they figured out how they could work out of their vehicles better. And they could take people from behind desks and get them out in the field. And how they could partner with sheriff's departments, other public safety organizations when they needed a place to go and stop. And so they worked through this process, and what happened out of that is, is we were able to address the budget deficit, and at the same time, we put over 100 sergeants and state troopers out in the field, out of their post, and got them out in the field to give better law enforcement to the citizens of our state by doing this in a very innovative way. And I really got to give credit to the Colonel and all of the Michigan State Police for being so thoughtful and innovative on doing that. And the same question I would ask is, that's the kind of approach I would hope every organization can take to themselves and how they operate.
Hello, Rick. Good to see you again. You and I have had this discussion many times, but here it goes again. There's many things in Detroit and in Michigan that need to be done that are not getting the attention that they need. Your balance in the budget without doing some of those things doesn't solve the problem. Yesterday, I was at city council when you tried to bribe city council with $137 million loan without any, without any way of repaying this, without any revenues to repay this. If the state would, and I made a comment yesterday, if the state would increase alcohol taxes just 20 cents per drink, it would generate at least $500 million per year in additional revenue. The state could then reinstate lost revenue sharing to distressed cities, Detroit included, and do much more. That's a better carrot than a loan that they cannot repay. Someone there heard my comment, and they said I should read the whiskey rebellion. So yesterday, after the meeting, I went across the street to John King's book, great bookstore, and I bought, they had it sitting there on the desk for me, believe it or not, and you can, and this is honest God's truth. George Washington, Alexander Hamilton, and Coleman Young all knew that the way to get out of these problems are to increase revenues. It's the only way you're going to do it. Why are you so objectionable to raising alcohol taxes?
Well, I think there's a broader question about making sure government's giving great service. Because the question is not about raising money and spending money. And if you look at from the state of Michigan side, I don't think we're giving our citizens great service for the dollars we're taking. Government should not be about simply spending money. It's about showing real results to real people. And I focus in on that, the starting point. So if you look at most of the things we're doing, we're putting benchmarks to say, measure us. Measure us and hold us accountable, just like you would in the private sector or you would in your family life, instead of simply taking money. I like to ask people the $5 question. If I came up to you and said, would you give me $5? You wouldn't just hand me $5. You'd say, what are you going to do with it? Or how are you going to do something good with it? You'd do that with your family members, you'd do it with your colleagues. We build a government that people thought you could just walk up and say, give me $5, and people expected to be given $5, or a whole lot more money. And I don't think that's in the best interest of doing things right. We can't afford that. That's one reason we have a huge issue at the national level. My view is, is you hired me to make sure that if I ask you for a dollar, I'm going to show you you're getting a dollar's worth of stuff for it, and that we're a good shopping choice. And so that's the focus we need to do, is have accountability metrics and be measured and implement real results. So when I'm talking about implementation for the city and asking the city to do these things and financial responsibility, we hold ourselves to the same or higher standard. So this is all about teamwork. This is, there's no us versus them. It's us. We need to do this together.
Governor, my name is Kyle Simpson. I just wanted to ask you a question about the regional aspects of the financial distress that Detroit is in. When you talked about Chicago earlier, one of the things that is present in that city that is not present in this region is a sense of regionalism. What are you, what are your plans in terms of transportation, in terms of regional infrastructure to bridge that divide and so to spur some level of economic development that really can only come from a regional approach as opposed to a Detroit and outlying areas and other areas in Michigan approach? What is your philosophy? And what specific steps are you taking and is your administration taking to bridge that fundamental issue that is crippling the entire area and not just Detroit?
Great question, because it is a real issue, that we need to do a better job on that. And I'll give you a couple illustrations. One is, is the Regional Transit Authority. When I took office, I started looking at the regional transit situation in this area, and it's terrible. Smart, DDOT, how things are working, it's not how it should be done. And so we said, let's start working on this issue for a regional transit authority. And one of my team, who is actually a fabulous guy, he'd been around a long time, he comes up and he goes, Governor, did you know this is attempt 24? The last 23 have failed? And it was because everyone just took Smart and DDOT and tried to jam them together, and they just weren't going to work. So it's like, let's change the question. How do we get a backbone of a regional system put in place that can succeed? So let's show success, implementation of real action, and then say, over time, now we can start addressing Smart and DDOT, and hopefully include M1 in it. I think that's a great opportunity. How can we start bringing these things together in a common fashion? So the starting point is, is let's get an authority set up, a regional transit authority that focuses on four counties, adding Washtenaw County to the traditional three, including the city in the dialogue. And let's do this rapid bus system that would connect key corridors as a backbone then that we could add to. So that's a big part of it, and that's making progress in terms of the legislation to make that happen. The other piece I would tell you is on economic development. One of the things I've asked the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to work with their local partners is to say, and this is for economic development, but also workforce development, some of the other activities, is let's ask the regions and push the regions to come together to be a much more tighter circle of partnership to say, let's do a regional plan about how we can complement one another. And easy illustrations are, there are cases of Michigan Works Agencies that sort of stop at county lines. And the thing is, is there could be a great job for someone getting trained on the other side, that we just need to make that connection. So let's not let artificial borders hold us back from a natural regional economy where we could succeed better, and let's plan that way.
Hi, Governor Snyder. My name is Jessica Quaznall, and I'm a student here at WC3. My question is, how do you plan to uncover all of the cover-ups that have been made to get our city into debt by the people in power at this time?
Well, again, I assume most people are good people working hard. But there are cases we do need to address, and I'll put that in concept. And I like that WC3, I got to get that down. Because I was using the long version, I get the lingo down in terms, because I appreciate President Ivy building such a great institution. So if you look at a couple things we do need to work on that I think the city itself has acknowledged, one area that I think we could be very supportive of and helpful is grant management. That I think we have a major case of, we have had, there have been too many problems with grants in terms of misuse of funds or lack of fully using the funds that are available. That's a terrible answer, is when actually, they've earned funds to do things in the community in a helpful fashion, and they just don't get deployed. There's too much of that that's going on. And so we want to be a supportive partner to say, are there things we can help on the grant management and administration side? To actually say, can we make sure they go, again, with measurements and accountability and transparency? All those things that are important, that get to your point, to make sure they're done the right way in the right place, and to show the taxpayers, they got a good return, but we're making a difference right in the communities. Because again, one thing that I am promoting, and I did this in our public safety message, is I asked the Department of Human Services, the Michigan Department of Human Services, to work on a pilot they had already started, but about asking their people to leave their offices and to say, can they get office hours and time in the schools to be closer to their customer? So we don't have someone saying they have to take one, two, or three buses to get to some bland government office, but can we get more in the neighborhood school to make it much easier to give better service to the citizens? I'm proud to say, they're working on that already, and I've actually had some positive feedback from the clergy. Because I want to say, again, I have to respect church and state, but if I could get some of the clergy to be open-minded to say, could we partner on that to help get them in the churches? Make much better customer service.
Ben Kelly?
Hi, my name is Shereah Solomon, and I'm a student here. I have a question. It says, although there are programs for older adults, so it says, training and job placement, do you take into account independent teenage and young adult programs being created in the future?
Yeah, we have to help the whole spectrum of things. I actually don't call it K through 12. I call it P20. Prenatal through lifelong learning is how we have to look at education, and we need to do a better job. And so one of the things we really do need to measure is outcomes and results, and I call it talent, instead of just creating either education or workforce development. Because what we do need to, we have to create the talent, but we need to do a better job of connecting talent and collaborating with the private sector to make that connection. One thing I encourage people here to go to for young people looking for a position is mitalent.org. We still have too much unemployment in Michigan. It's 9.2 percent. It's down from 14 percent, but it's still way too high. We have 76, over 76,000 open jobs in Michigan today. That would drop our unemployment rate by about two percentage points. So we created a portal last November to encourage whether you're a young person or an older person to go there and see what jobs are available, and there are tools to say, if you don't have the training, how you can help find the training to get you there. And that's just the start. So we need to focus in on getting you successful and connecting you with the private sector. That's where the jobs of the future are, is to help you get a job. One thing we also did is, is we're working on a community ventures program, because there are people that have been structurally unemployed. They haven't had a job in a long time. They may have challenges with literacy. I've proposed a program now for us to look at helping $15 million to focus in on these four communities that I mentioned the highest crime in, to say, can we come up with programs specifically targeted at helping those people get that job? Because the best solution to so many issues is if someone has a job, they're on a path to success. And it's not a dead-end job. What I told the people, these would not be make-work programs. These have to be parts of organizations that can show they can at least make a dollar, whether they be a nonprofit or a for-profit, so those jobs sustain and keep going. And then we can put training on top, so they have a career path to that next better job and that next job. That's what we need to be doing, and it's been missing for far too long.
Good morning, Governor. My name is Eric West. My question for you is, critical vendors are being slow paid and essentially lending them money to the city interest-free. What is the plan to give these services paid in a timely manner?
Yeah, well, that's important. And one of the questions is, is do they fully know all what their receivables and payables are and are tracking that the right way? Because if you want good service from someone, you have to pay them. And I've done that from the business side for a long time. So again, if you look at one of the situations in the city, that's the ways we can help, is help look at their systems. One of the things we're talking about in this agreement is adding a chief financial officer to the city. Think about this. Many of you are not in business, but anyone that's been in business or in a larger organization, every one of those organizations most likely has a chief financial officer. The city of Detroit has not had a chief financial officer. Wouldn't you need a chief financial officer the most when you're in a financial crisis, let alone when you're just operating normally? So this is one of the positions we've asked for to be put in this agreement, and I believe has been agreed to. So let's get a chief financial officer that can start digging into those kind of questions, because again, if you don't pay people, eventually, you're just not going to provide the service, and we could cause you to lose jobs because we messed up your business.
Governor, time, the clock is ticking. Banker is going to share a question that was sent to us by one of the students here at Wayne County Community College.
Yeah, Governor, we have an overflow room downstairs, so these are questions that came from that, but we only have, I think, time to only ask one question.
If you, Mr. Thompson, if you can do two together quickly.
Yes. The first question, Governor, is on the question of the light rail transit. Can you shed a little bit more light? Because it appears as if there was perhaps a tug-of-war between yourself, Mayor Bing, and the private sector on the light rail, M1 rail system. And the other question is, what are your plans for departments like the Detroit Water and Sewer Department within the context of this financial crisis?
Yeah, both. One, I've always thought the M1's a cool idea in terms of light rail. The question is, can it financially self-sustain? Or how much does it need in terms of dollars? Particularly the shorter version that stops up at Grand, that would probably stop at Grand Boulevard. I've never been against it. And the way I viewed it is, is that was being worked on with the mayor and people in the city, and I really appreciate the private sector people that stepped up. My focus was at the regional level, because that wasn't taking place. So I never viewed them as competing projects. I viewed it as complementary projects, in that my main focus was the regional one. And I believe with the private sector investors involved, they can do a good job on the M1 one, and they should all be part of a broader program for the long term. On the water department and things like that, I respect the issue, that was a big issue in the city charter analysis. So the goal here isn't to strip the city of assets. I thought the illustration of Belle Isle's really interesting, to say, "Let the city continue to own Belle Isle, but how can we essentially take over the operating cost, improve it, make it work, make it available for citizens, free up dollars to go put in the neighborhoods?" That's the kind of cool creativity we should be looking at for every department in some ways.
Governor, I just learned this morning that Robert Ficano's Chief of Staff is headed to Detroit Water and Sewer to be the lead person. Does that make you nervous?
Well, I hope it works out well. Again, we have to be careful, because there are a lot of good, hard-working people in the public sector. So we should never assume there's challenger problems. I mean, the average person, particularly public servants, work really hard for what they get paid. And I respect that. And we just need to be thoughtful that we're all working on teamwork and not creating problems. We want everyone to, I want people to succeed. And really get it down to saying, "Where is success and how can we reinforce that?"
Your closing remarks, Governor. And before you do, let me thank you very much and thank these wonderful people, Dr. Curtis L. Ivory and his team here at Wayne County Community College, for being the hosting site of this first Detroit Town Hall meeting. And for the sake of all of us, hopefully, everything is wrapped up by Friday. You like what you see, and there will not be a need for a Town Hall meeting, too. Your closing remarks.
I got a pen right here, so let's, hopefully, we can make some progress. No, and I want to thank everyone for doing this. I want to thank Dr. Ivory, I wish him the best. I hope he has a quick recovery. Same thing with Mayor Bing. WC3, see, I'm getting it down now, it's a great institution. I want to thank you for hosting this. Mildred Banker. I really appreciate you taking the time, because this is about communication. And you were thoughtful enough to say, "Let's have a dialogue with the citizens of Detroit." Because that's what really matters here. Because too often, people look at history.